All right. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to another school committee meeting and this last one of the school year. So I'd like to call the Concord Carolina Regional School Committee to order.
Welcome, everybody, and I would like to call the Concord School Committee to order.
All right, now present here tonight, so it's great. And on to our student update, and I see that we have our students with us. We have Harry, Zaria, and Felicity, so welcome. Oh, there, there's Darcy. We've got everybody here tonight.
We thought we'd all come just for the last meeting. Um, so we have like a bit of a quicker update for you guys tonight. And then we thought we could focus primarily on just some goals that we were sort of thinking about for now.
Harry, Harry, one sec.
Yeah.
We're having a little technical difficulty in the room, so hang on one second. Are we ready? All right, go ahead.
Okay, yeah, we're just thinking about like primarily focusing on some goals that we had laid out for the next full year and how we can kind of like improve ourselves in this position. But first, I think we could just start with the updates, so if you want to take this first point.
Yeah, um, so there's been a number of end of the year events that have been very successful. So both Harry and I attended the sophomore semi-formal, and it was a tradition before the pandemic, and it was happily reinstated this year by class government. And it was a very successful event. I think there was a lot of kids there, a lot of kids had fun, and it ran really smooth. And I think Harry can attest to that as well. And then there were also feel-good Fridays happening last week and this week. So there's been a raffle for candy for raising money for Ukraine. There's also been an ice cream truck, which has been very popular among students and different things to kind of de-stress and make students happier during a more stressful week of school. And then also there was a performing arts concert not too long ago, and Felicity performed at that. So she wants to talk about that.
Yeah, so this is also going to be really brief since it was about like three weeks ago. But I was in the chorus concert, and it was really great because a lot of people were unmasked. And the day after the chorus concert, I was not part of it. But there was also the band and orchestra concert, which was outdoors. And I heard that that was a great success as well, so.
Yeah, perfect. And then I guess, or Zaria, do you want to talk about the BSU walkout?
Yeah, okay, so two weeks ago, the club I'm a part of, BSU, held a walkout to highlight and discuss racially targeted in national issues that happened over the past month or so. And we basically just talked about Buffalo and stuff like that.
Yeah, and then I could just touch really quickly on finals. Um, we were sort of talking last week about how the stress is like a bit high and just because of people being active for various reasons and stuff like that. But I feel like it's all kind of come together and been pretty typical finals experience, so that's definitely good. And then as far as like goals for 2022 to 2023, I would say like the big theme of all these is just communication. But we were saying like specifically increased communication and work outside of our regular updates. A lot of this is inspired by when Darcy and I went to that like MASC conference back in, I think it was January. We saw how involved other student representatives were in their school committee outside of just like the regular joint school committee meetings and just being more active at like a day-to-day level.
Yeah, for sure. So a lot of them will do a lot more work within the school communities to introduce new legislation they think could be helpful or send out surveys. So kind of just increasing responsibility in the role and making sure we're using the most of the role for next year. And then another thing kind of related to communication again, is we've been talking about connecting with lower grades for a while. But that hasn't happened yet, but definitely we, I know that next year, Harry, Zarian, Felicity definitely want to connect with the CMS students and the Concord Elementary Schools. And then if you guys want to talk about the next point.
Okay, so we haven't really been in this position long, but we've been thinking about getting more experience and understanding what this position entails and what we can do better, what we can do to be a better member of it.
Yeah, and I think generally, understanding like, this is only my second meeting. So I think understanding exactly what we have the power to change. And yeah, so I hope that all of us can just continue to become better school committee reps.
Yeah, for sure. Um, I don't know, Darcy, we'll talk about the next.
Yeah, um, so we kind of sort of covered this a bit, but sort of like when we attended the MASC, there's a number of those types of opportunities. So participating more at the state level, and I think especially next year because there'll be three school committee representatives. It will be helpful because in case someone is unavailable or something, one of you guys could step in to attend a conference. And I think those are really valuable in helping us be better at our roles. And then if you want to talk about feedback.
Sure, yeah, I think we actually save that for the end. But just like sort of building off of what's been said so far, I think also just like including other guests from the school, whether it be for a specific club or group or something, or also just if there's someone who wants to talk about a specific problem they're having or an area where they think there's room for improvement. A lot of the things that Darcy and I talked about that are like more negative just come from the experiences of our friends or other people in the school we've talked to. And we're kind of saying that having people come and actually give their own account of such things could kind of be helpful. I know we do the recognitions and things like that, but just sort of making it a more regular part of our student update. And then also just going along with that, I think communicating to students that they are actually open meetings and they can attend and talk to the public comment. And the only way to raise an issue with the school committee is just by going through us.
Yeah, and I think also another point we mentioned is a bit maybe more transparency. So I think next year, there is a good group of kind of diverse perspectives, but also just making sure that we're kind of including every perspective in the school and highlighting areas for improvement, just as much as the good. Because I think that's really helpful and and sort of showing what could be improved.
Yeah, and then we just wanted to see if you guys had any like feedback or just thoughts for things you'd like to see differently next year.
All right, I will ask my members first, if anyone has any comments for our student reps or partying words for the end of the year.
I would like to first say thank you, and I hope that we continue to see the kind of regular involvement that you provided us this year. I thought that was really, really valuable, that it wasn't an occasional, but a very regular check-in because you are in those hallways every day, we are not. And to get us closer to life at the high school, the way you have done has been everything we could ask for, so thank you.
Yeah.
I think your goals in particular are excellent. That's my takeaway. Those are exactly the kinds of things that I think we're all interested in seeing. So truly well done.
I think that you guys have gotten much better as the year has gone on. And I don't say that, I say that in the best way possible, please take it in the right possible way. But your updates and the slideshow have been great, and it's really kept you organized. But feel free, you know, bring other students with you if you want to highlight something. We would definitely like to see that. And if there's any opportunity, I don't know if there's opportunity for school committee members and student reps to attend an MASC conference together. So I'm going to look into that and see if we could do something like that because I think it would be a great team type of session, and we can, you know, help plan our meetings like that. It'd be great, but really, you guys have done a great job. And I cannot believe that we have just freshmen and sophomores sitting in front of us because you do present yourself like you're already graduates. I will have to say that, so well done.
Yeah, thank you so much. Like, it's been a really great experience this year, and I'm excited for everything to come next year.
Great. And I know I said last week was going to be my last meeting, but I, I thought I would come on for a final time, and I just, I really appreciated the experience. And thank you for all the opportunities to speak and share our insights as well.
Well done, guys. Keep evolving. It's been really, it's been really strong.
Thank you so much, and we'll be in touch and feel free to reach out even over the summer. If you have an idea, you have our email addresses, so just reach out to us directly.
Yeah, of course. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Right, bye. Okay. All right, and now we're moving on to our public comment section of the meeting. So just as a reminder, our meetings are in the public but not with the public. So I will open it up to the public in the room first. And I don't see any public comments in the room first, so. This is not your turn yet. I'll call you up, don't worry. And then I will open it up to our Zoom community, and just as a reminder, you have three minutes. And use the raise hand feature on your computers. And I don't see any hands up, so we are moving on. Before we get to recognitions, we actually have a visitor with us tonight, and we would like to welcome as a school committee our newest assistant superintendent of finance, Mr. Bob Conroy, who comes to us from Berlin. You can come on right up here. Berlin Boilstern, I can't remember the Boilstern part. So this is an opportunity for the public to meet Bob. We have had a great opportunity to meet you through the interview process. And if you'd like to join us, and if you have anything you'd like to speak with us about or add, and.
Other than saying I'm excited about the opportunity to continue the work, good work that Jared did, kind of build on that foundation. Looking forward to starting. I've been visiting periodically and talking to people, getting up to, up to speed. But I'm really looking forward to being here full-time on July 1st, working with superintendent Hunter, the administrative team, and the greater school community.
We are glad to have you with us. So Bob will be starting on July 1. And does anyone have any questions for Bob or welcome words of wisdom?
Welcome words.
Happy summer. Yeah, welcome. It's really, it's a pleasure to have you with us, so we're looking forward to working with you.
Great, likewise. I appreciate you deferring the questions to August.
Thank you. And now we're going to move to our recognition section, which we're very excited about. We have the Concord Ed Fund with us tonight, and you can come on up to the microphone. Dr. Hunter, would you like to add anything or?
Yeah, we've met a few times as they've processed grants and vetted what was brought to them. A lot of exciting ideas, not as many as other years, but that's to be expected, I think, in COVID. And as always, it's been a really strong, great collaboration. So excited to have them here tonight to give us the final outcome.
And for those of you in the public, the Concord Ed Fund is a nonprofit here in Concord, and they do some great work funding grants for our district, and they fund from the preschool all the way up to our transition program, so welcome.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you so much. Pleasure to be here.
So I'm Trish Seifer, co-president of the Concord Ed Fund.
Leah Butler, my last official moment on the Concord Ed.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Leah. I'm Bill Stone.
Bill's chair of our grant.
I'm chair of the grant committee, sorry. Thanks for having us. We appreciate it. Just a little bit of trends, wanted to talk to you guys a little bit about how much, how many grants we get, trends in funding, and then some trends in grants. We awarded, well, I'm going to let her do the big reveal, but we awarded $48,000 this year, roughly. We typically get grants in the teens. This year, we've noticed that grants are trending downward a little bit in terms of dollar amount, but they're still in the mid-teens. Most of the grants we're seeing are part of the times that we have, we are getting more for wellness and diversity inclusion. Our three major trends are wellness, diversity, inclusion. That's the first one. Second one is outdoor learning, and the third one is always innovation, just, you know, scientific innovation. So some of the, some of the grants we've awarded for this year include a grant for the, for ADL training for the freshman for next year to get some training on anti-defamation. We've also awarded a grant to the middle school for positive behavior intervention and support, which is really, really good. On outdoor learning, we've, we've funded some growing racks, you've probably seen at the middle school, and some, some more gardening at Willard. We've also awarded some funding for some other outdoor activities for the middle school to participate in and learn in. And then as far as innovation goes, over the years, you know, we've done, we've done Zoom, we've done laser cutters. This year, we had a really cool STEAM program at the middle school for Lego Robotics, so things like that. So those are the three major trends we see. Questions, thoughts, comments?
Well, I love the Ed Fund. It's near and dear to me. So I just say, you know, you guys have had a challenging year. Obviously fundraising can be challenging, and, you know, and our teachers have been challenged through COVID and everything else, as does every nonprofit. So we appreciate the work that you've done and really sticking with it and getting out there and motivating teachers to apply for grants. So, and we did hear about some of it last week in our school improvement plans, middle school, and positive behavior intervention system. So, you know, we've already heard about that, which is great. And I think that Mr. Nimitz also talked about ADL. So it's good to see that we can work collaboratively together to make these programs happen for our kids.
Yeah, I think, I think the teachers, you can, you can sense fatigue. So there's, there's, there's definitely, we hope, we hope we're more.
That's well said.
We hope for more of an uptick.
Yeah.
I think we're trying to become more flexible, like we have a grant season where we had a certain deadline, and I think we need to be flexible, that they might want something in the fall. And so I think we're looking at our process and kind of making sure that we allow them the flexibility they need to get their grants in at the time. So we're just on that too, to make it easier for them.
And while it was a sort of a more difficult couple of years in terms of fundraising, we couldn't do our big events that we've always done. We have been odd in the way that the community has stepped up for the Concord Ed Fund, just event after event for us. So I think that should be said, that this community is pretty special and cares very much for the schools. So that's always been really very positive for our board, that and our wonderful collaboration, the board.
Thank you. That's mutual.
What you do is so emblematic of that, you know, it makes abundantly clear to teachers that the depth of the care and support is very, very deep. Is the Ed Fund in its second decade or third decade now?
Ninety-two.
Right in the midst of every form. That's where the Ed Fund came in there.
Shameless plug, but we've awarded over $3 million.
Wow, good for you. Yep.
Good.
Well, I think we are all indebted to the three of you and all the donors and all the others that worked on the Ed Fund. Thank you. We know that much of the work goes unseen by this school committee, but we know what's happening, and the teachers therefore know what's happening. And ultimately, the kids know it has happened, so thank you so very, very much.
Thank you.
Because we had that big check, I know this is a little unconventional, could we like grab a photo or two?
I think we need a photo. Take a quick photo. No, Trish.
No, your hair looks great.
Through the chairs. Yeah, go ahead.
Are we getting in the middle?
Oh, no.
You guys, you guys have a sense of this. You try to stop us.
You should get in there. We need your pop of color. Thank you so much.
You, thank you all.
Thank you.
Extend it. Congratulations to everybody. I know it's.
Yes, we have a great group. Thank you.
And we do appreciate the balloons and graduation time. The Ed Fund is also responsible for those balloons. And I know that it's a labor of love, so the families really appreciate that, so thank you. Okay. Thank you. All right, on to our minutes, and I believe that all of our members have received the minutes from April 29th, May 10th, and May 12th. So I'm going to make a motion to approve the minutes of April 29th, May 10th, and May 12th.
I'm going to interrupt if I may. I did put a hold on with your indulgence on May 10 last week. I was of a mind that perhaps Ms. Boynton had wanted to resolve, have the school be resolved, an issue, not resurrected issue. Forgive me, sorry. But indeed, on checking the tape, the words were, yes, let's resurrect. The other request I had was that be referenced to when Ms. Boynton received the complaint. She was quite explicit about it. It was quote, "yesterday morning." So just for chronology, I'd like that added.
Okay, and, and that was in there, that, so you want that added to the minutes?
Correct.
It's in there, right. So as is.
If it's in the version now, yes.
Yes, yes, we didn't make the change, so yes.
It seemed like a playback of what she said.
Okay, I didn't know.
By the video.
I didn't know it was in the minutes.
We didn't make any change to that.
And I'm asking that there be a change such that her chronology is, is referenced in the minutes.
As she, as she spoke at that evening?
Correct.
Yes. Okay, so why don't we hold on the May 10th once again? And we'll just double-check that with Erin because she is not on tonight.
Okay.
So let's hold on the May 10th minutes.
Well, if it was important to the speaker, I think I'd pay attention to it.
Okay. I just, I can't remember which version is up right now unless, do you have the minutes? Because if they're accurate, then let's vote them.
There is no timeline. I thought that there was, maybe I.
No, I know.
So we'll make that change. Yep, so just the April 29th and the May 12th minutes. Move now. May 10th minutes. May 12th minutes, we're holding on the May 10th.
Yep, do we have to make a motion or just?
Yes.
So I move to approve the April 29th, 2022, and May 12th, 2022 minutes.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
I.
opposed? Okay. And we have the, so we'll bring back in August that May 10th set of minutes.
I apologize for, I didn't understand.
I think.
No problem.
I didn't understand the next.
Okay.
Sorry.
Okay.
All right, correspondents, we had at Concord Public Schools four emails from a single individual requesting audience with the school committee. And I believe a few of them also had car copy to the region.
Right. That's it. That was it? And our chairs and liaisons, we just met last week, so I didn't hear from anyone this week. So unless anyone has anything to add from this past week, Court?
I didn't know what I'd have her to report. This is a select board last night and finance audit committee this morning.
Okay.
I can be brief on both. Select Board of Note, the outgoing Sustainability Director, Amanda Cohn, who's been with us for, I think, a couple of years now, regretfully short, unfortunately. She spoke of the working group and the EPA grants and the potential for school bus support for electrification. She referenced the hope that the scope of work for the contracting for the bus depot is underway. Nobody said it wasn't, so I'm sure it is. But that's important contracting prep work, I'm sure. The school, as Lori well knows, is part of a working group on, on town sustainability and in particular, transportation. And technically, the high school buses are not part of that because in a technical sense, those, of course, are regional, not town. And that was really, I think, the, the extent of it. But really, it was clear that they're, they're very active and they're eager for schools to keep pace with them. In terms of the Finance Audit Advisory Committee, this is a very small group chaired by the Chair of the Select Board and de facto is Chair of the Audit Committee. And the audit, here's the headline, it's a clean audit. That's their euphemism for we've scrubbed it and we announced that the town and the regional school district, both of which receive a separate and comprehensive audit, come up clean. That doesn't mean that they come up without findings. No auditor would be worth his or her medal if they didn't have a few recommendations for anybody, because there's always room for improvements. I'll get to that in a moment. They're minor. The, the, the big news is the Gatsby changes, the generally accepted accounting principles, where we have moved toward one of their more recent advisories, Advisory 84. And a big one coming up is Advisory 87. And that, Bob, I'm sure knows much more than I do about this. This requires that we not only reference in, on our ledger, on our balance sheets, the capital leases, but also the operating leases, which could be as, require as much detail even as software leases. When this new advisory came out from the government, software leases were considered not consequential enough until, oops, now we think maybe they are. So it's going to be a burden on our folks in the, in the business office to move toward this new requirement for, for our accounting purposes. The audit is unusually late this year. Normally, we'd be having this conversation in March, not in June. We expect it to be back on track next year with a more customary timetable. The audit is not 100% complete at the region. It is at the town and the region. I think it's a matter of minutes or hours before they declare their, their work finished. Their reference to the liabilities that we and the town, we as the region and the town have to be watchful for, one is our pension liability and the other is our OPEB liability. And they believe both to be in very good shape. OPEB, we talk a lot about that here. It's funded at the 95% level at the town, which is extraordinary. It's funded at 40 or 40-plus percent of the region, and that is very, very good, unusually good. We're really ahead of virtually every other community in that regard, so no worries there. The only recommendation they had, quote, "we continue to recommend the district," and this is the region now, "we continue to recommend the district establish and implement procedures to properly report year-end accounts payable in the general ledger at year end." This is always a struggle. I know when I worked for the school district, we always considered June 30th to be the longest day of the year because you had about two weeks to scramble to try to close everything out the best you could, best you could. And they want us to continue to work on declaring at the end of the year, what is still an accounts payable, a demand, if you will, for money that is owed, that we put on the books as to be paid, and what is encumbered, and should it be encumbered? Then they want more specificity about what it's encumbered for. It doesn't mean the audit isn't clean. They're very happy with the work coming out of our business office as they have been in the past. But this is their, their single request is that we have continued to attend to this one. And if you want the full 200 pages, be careful what you ask for. Be happy to send it to you. No, but seriously, there are a few, few sheets that are very, you know, very informative. And through our superintendent, should Bob receive a copy of that, Lori?
Yes.
Little light reading between now.
I think he's, yeah, he's been here a lot.
He's way ahead of me.
I'm really looking forward to Bob starting.
Any questions? I'll do my best, and Bob will help me.
Thanks for it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else have anything? I think it was a light week. We met six days ago.
I went for the CCAC, I just went to a little.
A gathering, perfect.
Nothing discussed about the work, but it was a great group of people and very excited to.
Great. Thank you. Was ever able to make it or no?
No, I was not able to make it.
That's, okay, but it was a good, good story coming out. Good, good. All right.
All right. Moving on to discussion, we have Kristen with us this evening to take us through our annual data from the STAR 360 platform. I think it's worth noting that I think STAR has been in the district since 2017, and we've only grown and augmented the ways in which we use it in the past three years. So I guess I'm going to just hand it over to you. You can talk to us about STAR 360 in general and take us specifically this year's data.
Great, and I'm joined by three fabulous assistant principals, Judy Olson from Alcott. If you could just wave, yay, there she is. And she's actually retiring this year. Olive Bradford from CMS, and she works primarily at Pevady. And Katie Stahl is Assistant Principal at our high school, and she is joined by Terry Smoka, extraordinary tech specialist. So these are my data gurus. We've been meeting to pull this together for you. And we're each going to speak in turn. And I will start by sharing my screen. All right, so as you just heard, we have been giving the STAR three sixty and that's what this presentation is about. This is not all of our data. It's not even a drop in the bucket of all of our data about how our students did, but it's what we have right now before the term actually ends for the students. So we collected this data. We had to give an ending STAR assessment to all the students to see where they were by June first. And then we presented last week to the administrative team and tonight we are presenting to you. Okay, so STAR three sixty is an online assessment. It's from the Renaissance Company and we assess in literacy and math. It has both a screener tool, which is a very quick, it usually takes kids twenty to thirty minutes to do. And it also has deeper dive. So those are called curriculum-based measures. We don't use that part of it unless we want to know more information about a student. This is also a Department of Education Accepted Screener for Dyslexia. As you know, we now have to screen all students in the early grades for signs of dyslexia. So this is on the approved list. This is what we give. And we use it with many, many other assessments. I don't want you to think that we're walking away with just one assessment. It's just one that we do in literacy. Only we give eight other assessments over the course of a kid's year, so we really know where they're going. And if, in particular, we use STAR to identify them very early in the school year and at the end, if they need extra support or extra challenge. So we want to see where they are. So. So the history of STAR is that in Concord is that we started at the middle school in both math and English Language Arts when we started what was then called our RTI system. So where we gave students extra support or extra challenge. You, I think you heard Principal Cameron speak about that, the RTI and RTE. Yep. So that's when we started it, twenty seventeen. Very shortly after, a year later, the high school started their RTIs program, so they started giving STAR. And then the pandemic hit. And none of our measures that we used with our elementary students could be used because they were all at home. So we quickly said, well, we have a tool that's working in our middle school and our high school. So at the beginning of the pandemic, twenty twenty, we started using with all our elementary kids. So in that time, we call this a pilot for our elementary. We know we're using it for our middle school and high school, but as we were moving between the in-person hybrid at-home modes, we needed an online assessment, particularly in a time when we were worried about gaps in students' knowledge because they were home a lot. So we we adopted STAR because we already knew how to use it as from a district level. We already knew we got really solid data that was then validated by other data that we had. So we we decided to use it. So we've been using it at the elementary level as a pilot. But we've decided to adopt it. We had a big committee. We've now adopted it for all everyone, K to twelve. And so next year, we'll start sending out parent reports so they see what it looks like. The parent reports we had to tailor with the Renaissance Company, they look very much like the MCAS reports, if you with the bars and where your kid is and so forth, relative to other kids. It's normed data. So it's the your child compared to other students in the same grade level at the same school. So we give it in English and math. Kids take it usually in those classes at the middle school and the high school. In elementary, they take it in their homeroom. All right, so sample reports, there's about five slides of this, and I'm just going to point out a few things. So very clearly on this, it looks like it's a progression graph. It is not. Each one of those, because that looks like we're going down, right? No, we're not going down. Each one of those bars actually represents a student. So the students who are represented in green are at or above our benchmark. The blue are on watch. The yellow are kids in need of intervention and the kids in red are in need of urgent intervention. So I can say very easily, in Concord, every student who on this is getting blue, yellow, or red is either getting RTI services, MTSS services, or they're getting special education. And some students are getting both, depending on what their disability is. The other thing I wanted to point out on this slide is if you see here, I'm circling right now with the cursor, it says scaled score at or above seven hundred. That's for students in the green. And then you look over at the next column, it says percentile rank. So here, at or above forty percentile rank, that means that's where the benchmark is set. So in Concord, sometimes we leave it at this standard benchmark, but often we bump it up and we bump it up as high as fifty-four percentile rank. That's much higher. Because we found when we had it as low as forty, we got almost no kids needing any intervention. So we had to sort of tease out the kids that needed intervention. Okay, so here is a sample class data. And this would be what a teacher would receive. You can see there are about twenty students in this class. Each one of them is represented by a bar. And you can see the students who are struggling right here. This is helpful information when we're grouping students. Sometimes if we do it by need. And again, the teacher gives this in class. They have the data right at their fingertips and it takes about twenty minutes for the older kids. So here is individual sample data. When I described what kind of data the parent would get, this is what they'll get. So this has probably the most sophisticated concept right on this slide, which is if you look at the first bar, it says most recent test. So you can see where a student's score would fall if they were in the red, yellow, blue. And then you can see this individual student is a first grader. They're falling right at the bottom of the green. Do you see that? So that's the individual kid. Yeah, with the arrow. And he has a scaled score of a hundred, eight hundred and five. So here's the sophisticated concept. We expect and the testing company expects that kids are going to grow over the course of the school year. So that scaled score actually gets higher over the course of the year. So to land in the same place according to your kids, you actually have to score higher. Does that make sense? Yeah. So you can see this student is still in the green. And they have a projected scaled score of eight hundred and fifty-eight. Does that make sense? Okay. It's really important as we go through how we actually did.
Kristen.
Yep.
Could you go back?
That's a test. Again.
I should understand this. I don't. I certainly understand how the most recent test is one of the indicators toward possible or projected. I don't understand why the the urgent intervention scale for a single individual is is changing in in the visual here. It's irrelevant for that kid.
For that kid, it's irrelevant. Yeah. Yeah, but this is representing all kids and where that child is relative to his peers.
Okay. All right. And that would be an unusual an unusual relative reference to green and red. We wouldn't normally see a preponderance of red.
Right. Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's the part that makes you panic. Yeah. And it's just that all the way up until that score, you would be in the red. Yeah.
So is another way of saying that that the most recent test, you know, that makes sense to me. So that at the next test, you must like it, the intervention, the urgent intervention gets larger because if you're not growing at that rate, yeah.
Exactly. Yep. And you've now not all just pass statistics, AP statistics, you're good. Yeah.
And MCAS is something similar with projected.
Yeah.
You know, where they're supposed to perform.
Yeah, and all of these assessments are normed against. So it's it's not just measuring you across time, it's measuring you against your peers. Yeah, yeah.
Great.
It's pretty complex. So in this, oh, I think I went. Yeah, okay. So here's this young man. He's in first grade. And I pulled this out so you can see that we can see the subdomains. This is what's most important when we're looking at a child who may need intervention. So this first grader, as you can see, is struggling in some areas of reading comprehension. So do you see the Ks? That means he's at a kindergarten level at looking at key ideas and details, craft and structure, integration of knowledge and ideas. The ones, the subdomains with lightning bolts, do you see those? Yeah, those mean that's where we should focus our instruction. Okay. So here he is, though, in what is at this grade level, first grade, more important, which is phonological awareness, phonics and word recognition. This is some of the stuff that leads us to thinking about dyslexia. And you can see he's all at the first grade or on benchmark, but with some focus areas. Okay, so you've seen this. But the idea is if a kid is falling into that needing intervention zone, either the blue, yellow, or red, or low green, sometimes we see kids also, we're going to give them intervention. And so these are the three tiers of intervention. All students receive tier one, that first floor of the school building there. In tier two, that's small group targeted instruction. It's a goal, you know, focused on where the student is struggling, not just in reading, but within the domains, five domains of reading, we're going to target. We would make groups by, you know, if kids are all struggling in reading comprehension, we would put them in a group together and so on. They could either get this intervention from their classroom teacher, or they could get it from an interventionist outside the classroom or a special educator. Then the kids needing the most intense support are at the top tier three. And that's very small group or individual support that they're get. Again, they can get it in the classroom, outside of the classroom. It can be their classroom teacher. It can be an interventionist, like a reading specialist, or it can be a special educator. Any questions about that? Yeah, okay. So we are going on to talk about our elementary data.
Hi, Kristen. You may go ahead and move to the next slide. This chart represents the early literacy and numeracy assessment. This assessment is given to students in grades kindergarten through second grade. The three column graphs represent each of the three assessment reporting blocks, fall, winter and spring. You can see from the data that in the fall, seventy percent of the students were at or above proficient. In the winter, that percentage of students increased to seventy-eight percent. And that percentage was consistent in the spring assessing timeframe as well. Maintaining that same percentage is significant for a couple of reasons. First, when students reach a proficiency level of approximately eight hundred fifty-two on the early literacy assessment, they move to the STAR reading assessment. So there are a few students that move in the win in the winter assessing period into the reading assessment. But in the spring, many of our second grade students move into the reading assessment. So during that spring assessment period, in this graph representation, about seventy-five of the students with the highest proficiency from the winter assessment had moved from the early literacy to the reading. So that was a pretty high goal for us to attain and maintain that same percentage of proficiency. As you'll remember from the information that Kristen shared with us, that scaled score increases from one assessment block to the next. So also maintaining that score meant that those students were held to a higher bar and had to achieve a higher score in order to be at or above proficient. Next slide, Kristen. This graph represents the reading assessment. This is given to students in grades three through five. And also in the spring assessment, those second graders that have moved into this assessing, into this assessment as well. You can see that the level of proficiency progresses from eighty-three percent in the fall and winter to eighty-five percent in the spring. The number of students falling into the intervention categories reduces from ten percent in the fall to eight percent to seven percent in the spring, which is a pretty significant change. As explained in the earlier slide, the scaled score is lower in the fall than it is in the spring. So achieving a higher at or above proficiency level is significant. And also that spring assessment reporting includes many of those second grade students that have moved from early literacy to the reading assessment. So they were able to also achieve proficiency in the reading assessment. So it's a pretty significant accomplishment. Next slide. This slide represents the math assessment. The math assessment is given to students that are taking the STAR reading assessment. The early literacy assessment includes numeracy, so those students do not take the math assessment. Students achieving at or above proficiency was eighty-eight percent in the fall and ninety-one percent in the winter and spring. With such a high level of proficiency, there was little room for growth. However, you'll see that the percentage of students in the intervention categories moved from seven percent to four percent. So that's a pretty significant accomplishment as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Judy. And now Olive with the middle school.
Good evening. Thank you all for having us here tonight. So I just want to talk a little bit about how the middle school uses data. Kristen addressed some of this. But just to to be clear on our programming and how it's used. So middle school teachers give the STAR math and reading assessment to all students three times per year, once during each trimester. And we use the STAR scores for two key purposes. The first is give teachers information about common strengths and weaknesses of the students they're teaching. So as you saw the report that that Kristen was showing about reading skills, that teachers, for example, are able to see if a high number of students are struggling with a particular question about fractions, that that may be a concept that teachers have to revisit. So our teachers meet in common planning teams once per cycle and have this data available to them to look at. And again, it's taken three times. So they're able to see fairly recent data about students. STAR also helps us identify and serve students who are struggling in ELA and math. Teachers get information about which students may benefit from additional check-ins in class, particular groupings or an invitation to office hours. And then as a school, sixth, seventh and eighth graders have an RTI and RTE block built into their schedules three times per cycle. So enrichment and intervention classes are trimester-long classes. And each term, teachers get together and look at STAR data as well as other data, class performance data from other assessments that they use, and determine which students might benefit from that additional support in ELA and math and can even drill down and see which skills each of those students who need additional support might benefit from within intervention. So what you're about to see is data from each grade level, six through eight in ELA and math. So you're going to see six slides. And just to reiterate the point about the scaled scores, the benchmark for proficiency rises. So you're going to see pretty consistent percentages in terms of student scoring, but that's actually an indication of expected growth, not a flat performance. So we're going to look at ELA first. And this represents the fall and spring data from the sixth grade ELA. So in the fall, the scaled score that students need to achieve to demonstrate proficiency is ten fifty-one. And eighty-seven percent of students in sixth grade demonstrated that. In the spring, it's ten seventy and eighty-four percent of students met that benchmark. In seventh grade, in the fall, ten seventy-three is the scaled score we're aiming at. Seventy-five percent of students met that benchmark. In the spring, the scaled score we're aiming for is. In the spring, the scaled score we're aiming for is ten eighty-eight, and seventy-six percent of students met that benchmark. And for eighth grade ELA, aiming for ten ninety-five is the benchmark in the fall. Seventy-seven percent of eighth graders met that benchmark. Eleven oh nine in the spring, and seventy-nine percent of eighth graders met that benchmark. Moving on to math. In the sixth grade, ten forty is our proficiency benchmark. In the fall for sixth graders, eighty-two percent of students met that. And in the spring, it's ten sixty, and eighty-two percent of sixth graders met that. And then seventh grade is actually the major aberration, and the seventh grade team was very excited about this. So in the, in the fall, ten sixty is our scaled score we were looking at, and seventy-seven percent of students hit that benchmark. In the spring, ten seventy-seven is the proficiency benchmark, and we saw a pretty significant growth of seven percent. So this is the first cohort of students who had unleveled math for two years at the middle school. And that's a program we're interested in tracking data around. There was also particular growth in students in the urgent intervention category with this group moving up, which was exciting. And we haven't really had time to look specifically at interventions and what was effective. But this is a group we're hoping we'll be able to spend some time looking at which students made most significant growth and seeing what instructional moves were happening, whether during regular education or during our intervention block that really helped students, helped students move there. And then in eighth grade math, our fall benchmark is ten seventy-eight. We had eighty-two percent of students hit that benchmark for proficiency. And in the spring, ten ninety-four and eighty-three percent of students.
Thanks, Olive. And now we have Katie Stahl and Terry Spoker for the high school.
All right, good evening, everybody. So we're going to look at the ninth grade data. So we give the STAR reading and math both in the fall and in the spring. We give it twice a year. You can see here, this is a sample of our STAR math score, our sample report. Similarly to the middle school, we also use our data to inform classroom instruction and practices, to also inform RTI and what, you know, target skills students need to be focusing on or where they're struggling. And we also often refer to these reports in our student intervention team meetings. If there's a student who's being presented who's struggling, you know, academically, we'll go back and look at their scores. So this is an example of our STAR math report with eighty-seven percent of students hitting benchmark. Can you go to the next slide, please, Kristin? Thank you. So these are the scores from the fall for math and also the spring. So as you can see, in the fall, ten eighty-eight was the scaled score with the percentile rank being at forty, and students scored at eighty-seven percent, hitting the target. And in the spring, the benchmark was set at ten ninety-seven for the scaled score, and our students scored ninety-two percent, which is great, you know, where we would want them to be after the year. Next slide, please. So this is our reading data. As you can see, for the fall, we had the benchmark scaled score at eleven thirty-eight with sixty-six percent of students at or above benchmark. And in the spring, it dips down a little bit to sixty-four percent at benchmark with the scaled score being at eleven forty-nine. I think there's a few reasons for this dip. One is we had fewer students take the test in the spring due to the time of year it was given in May, when the COVID surge was happening. So we had fewer students actually present for taking the assessment. And also, it's just at the high school level, at times can be a little bit of a struggle to get our students to take these assessments seriously, although we do try really hard every time the teachers do the best they can to let them know that, you know, this data is important data that we use to inform instruction. But again, that does not always happen at our level. So those are our, our reports. And what I will say is with the students in the reading who are in the green, they're really high. So again, you know, we've set our benchmarks higher, as Kristin explained, in Concord compared to, you know, other districts and national averages. The students who are in the green are mostly reading at actually like a twelfth and eleventh grade reading level. So they're pretty, you know, advanced for hitting the benchmark. They're really exceeding. And the students who are struggling more in the yellow and red are around, you know, the seventh or eighth grade reading level. And if a student is in the red, you know, they're significantly below grade level, and those are students who are absolutely receiving very targeted reading intervention.
Great, thank you. So just five points of summary. We use STAR three sixty in grids K through nine as a screener in reading and math. The data is given from the beginning, middle, and end of the school year, and it's used to measure students' growth, measure our program effectiveness, and decide which students may need targeted assessment. So if a student is ending up in one of those colored regions of blue, yellow, red, we would do more assessment to figure out what they were struggling with. So for example, in reading, we might give the dibbles, which is a much deeper assessment. Within each domain that's tested, subdomains are measured to pinpoint exactly where students are struggling and where they have strength. And that's the data that is used by classroom teachers, the interventionists, and school administrators to make all those decisions about intervention. Our average scores, both CPS and CCHS are well above the national norms. You could see when we were going through the slides, sometimes we were using the national norm of forty percentile rate. But more than half the time, we were, we upped it to fifty-four. You can see that in the reading domain especially. And so we saw growth at every grade level this year in both reading and math. That's the good story and good note to end on. Do you have questions?
I have a question. Do they give you state data too? Is it just national? Is it local and national?
Yeah, unlike the MCAST, we don't get state data.
State data, okay.
No, because it's a choice, which screener each district is going to do. Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So for example, with MCAST data, we get the state data, but we really compare ourselves to the about twenty districts that have very similar populations. Yeah.
Kristin, is there, how should I start? I can well imagine that validity and reliability measures tell us that this is a good instrument. You made clear at the outset, this is not the only instrument, but this is today's for us, for which we thank you. So I can imagine that other, other measures conform with this one rather nicely. But is there any other one that we give that would, you would look to? Because you're closer to this probably than any of us. Any other instrument you would look to, to round out a picture of a particular child?
Yeah, certainly. So we give a lot that are close, like dibbles and so forth, that are just deeper. But in the area of writing, this can look a little bit at craft, a tiny bit. But we actually use much deeper, where kids are responding to a writing prompt, and they're actually doing writing. And we then score that against a normed rubric instead. That's a much better picture of a kid's writing.
So open up the window wider, that'd be the next one you'd go to.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Good. This is great.
Good.
Really helpful. Great job.
Well, thank you to Judy, Olive, Katie, and Terry. This was great. It was a fun meeting with you all and talking numbers.
And it's great to see their students have made so much progress, especially what we've just come out of. And we can actually see, we have data behind it to see that they're actually achieving. So.
Yeah, yeah.
Great.
Yeah, good. Thank you. Bye, guys.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
It's great to see them at the end of the year. Really, really great. All right. And no one has any other questions? Okay. All right, moving on. Our school committee self-evaluation. After last week's meeting, I was able to connect with Dorothy Presser. She was not able to attend tonight's meeting. And, but she did reiterate the importance of maintaining our best practices of keeping our annual self-evaluation regardless of whether the year is positive or negative, or any other mitigating special circumstances. We did discuss a potential date. And I did take into consideration a couple of the concerns, which were around having ample time to complete the survey. So Dorothy did get back to me today, setting a due date of August nineteenth. So we'll be able to get the survey out this week. So there'll be plenty of time to take it. And then the date for the evaluation with the air, the synthesis with the MASC will be in September. It's hard right now for those guys to sort of have their calendars. So they're, they're going to, the two representatives, Jim and Dorothy, will get their calendars out shortly to propose a host of dates for us. And yeah, so you guys can be on the lookout in your email for the link to the survey. Sure. Hope for that end, please.
Great. Are these anonymous?
They are anonymous and all, and the survey, the survey link will go right into Dorothy at the MASC. So no one on the committee will see anyone else's responses, which is a nice departure for us. Normally, I think the chairs have run the process, so I think this will be great moving forward.
All right. Last year, we did the five questions, and that was sort of our.
Yeah.
Right, the assessment. But prior to that? Longer, what was the process?
Yeah. Wasn't consistent, I wouldn't say.
It's always something new. Okay, trying something new.
Okay.
Yeah. It's not, I just didn't know what, you know, when I came on the first year, I didn't, I don't remember there being a self-evaluation process. But that was a weird year, because that was COVID. So I was just wondering what our past practice, because you said like keep up our past practices. So I wanted to know if anyone knew what were our past practices.
I was assuming it was an annual evaluation per our policy, but maybe not. So, so we're going to follow our policies.
Making sure that, yeah, just starting on our, please do the best we can.
Okay, all right.
Moving on.
Just one question, that will be an evening meeting in September.
I'm sorry.
Evening meeting.
Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely, yes, yes.
We're going to be having a lot of evening meetings.
Yeah. I think that's the general consensus and request coming out of.
Are we going to still follow what you proposed, assistances, and then two roles and responsibilities?
No, this is different.
No, I understand, but we were going to do three different meetings this summer.
Yes, we are now not doing, so I actually, I did a color-coded calendar. I mean, putting everybody's dates, we don't have any.
No, no, I'm not saying in the fall, we're going to do those three meetings.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 but they'll be set different meetings. Okay, we just, we'd hope to do them.
There's going to be some four night meetings, you know.
Yeah.
With some com and such.
So, so, yeah.
We could also look to a Saturday, though. That's not.
We can schedule that and figure it out. We also might be able to, this is a little bit of departure from this, but do our, you know, condense the meetings, see if we can make them either longer and less frequent or, you know, that's all up for discussion. But unfortunately, we'd hope to engage in some of that work, including this over the summer. And we're a busy bunch, and that's just sadly not going to happen.
So then we're not meeting at all this summer.
And it's no, you know, again, we just, it's wild, we don't overlap. Maybe next year, we plan our.
Together.
Together.
Right?
I'm sorry.
Didn't try doodle pole, because it was just not worth even going.
Yeah, and I mean, again, I'm so mad. I made my highlighter.
Color-coded X.
I think you were green, Carrie was yellow, I don't remember, but anyway. And I was like, oh, my gosh, it really is. August twenty-ninth is our first available date that everyone at the table minus Kristin is here. So it's just, it's tricky, and it's expected. And, you know, I think a lot of people table plans for two years, and some of our table plans are now being executed this summer. So that is, you know, evident. So again, nobody's fault. You know, best laid plans, no, it doesn't always happen. So, so, yeah, so stay tuned for the fall. For some work.
Evan popped on and has her hand raised. Oh, no, on Zoom. Oh, I just saw that.
You have a public comment coming.
Yeah, a public comment is coming up, and then you can talk. Do you mind? Sorry, Evan, we'll get back to you.
We were close. Okay, so we'll get to you, Evan, in a chat. Okay, so school committee and superintendent.
I'm going to anticipate what she's going to ask, and that she'd be sending the survey. But I'm going to predict.
Yeah.
Yes.
And she will. So last week, we discussed that we had engaged with Rob Evans. I don't think I gave his proper background last week. He's the executive director of the Human Relations Service out of Wellesley. He consults with schools and organizations in the area of professional and organizational development. This week, we're pleased to announce that we have in fact commenced our work with Rob, and it is underway. So stay tuned for progress that might come out of that. And.
Can I ask you to talk about Thursday night? Because I'm confused about what we're doing.
Sure.
I don't know what we're doing.
We are, Rob is going to, Rob has met individually, I think with all of us. I think all of our interviews with him have concluded. I think he's going to synthesize some themes that he noticed in our conversations in hopes of trying to give us some ideas and advice around ways that we can improve our interpersonal dynamics and our communication with each other, with the administration, maybe the public. I don't, you know, I don't know. And, and that's really it. So I think it was important for him to get all of our perspectives to see if he can identify areas for growth and improvement that he will help us learn from. That's really it.
So we will not be discussing this. You'll just be sort of presenting stuff to us.
We will not be taking, I spoke with our legal counts on this, we will not be taking any votes. We won't be discussing any policy. And we won't be, no votes, no policy, and no deliberations about school committee business of any kind.
So we won't be talking about the allegations or the complaint. Is that school committee business, in my opinion?
Rob has not given us any agenda. He hasn't sent us anything more than what Alexa said. I have not met with him again, so our, kind of our guess is as good as yours. Sure. As to kind of how he's going to roll it, we don't have an article to prepare. It's different from the work that we did with Tony. So I'm not, I'm not sure.
Well, that wouldn't be, that would be out of bounds, in my opinion.
We're, we can ask Michelle about that, but.
I think Michelle has a pretty clear under, I mean, central to this work is the fact that there's a complaint. I mean, I think that will be acknowledged in this meeting, yes.
But so we won't be discussing it as a group. That's different than acknowledging it.
I'm sorry?
We will not be discussing it as a group.
I don't know what you mean by that. Discussing that there is a.
If I'm understanding you correctly, the question is, would the setting prompt deliberation that would get us into open meeting law issues? Or will we stay on the right side of that question?
Yeah, no, we won't be discussing norms and protocols for adoption, things like that. There might be advice from Rob, where eventually we then work with that advice to adopt in a separate session, norms.
Okay.
Protocols, that kind of thing. But we wouldn't at that time make, make actionable, if you will, his advice into agreed-upon norms or agreed-upon.
I'm even saying discussing protocols would be.
He may make advice, he may advise us. He will advise.
But we're not voting on anything, we're not deciding anything.
It's deliberation. So I think we need to stay very far on the other side of that by not doing that.
Sure.
And, and Michelle, our attorney's been made aware of that.
You know, like how Tony's thing didn't fall under the workshop exemption in the end.
Well, it actually did, I think. We just chose not to.
No, I think that it was determined that because we were going to be discussing, we were all going to like say what we could do better ourselves and all of that kind of stuff. It ended up, she had sent an email originally.
Yeah, that's attached to the email that I sent you.
But, but then I believe that it got, that that fine line, as it was described, you know. But but then I believe that it got, that that fine line is as it was described, you know.
And I, and I had
Yeah.
I had conversation with
But if it's, instead, this is, instead, this is more of a, here are some suggestions and everyone takes it away, digests it, and we don't
Yeah, I mean, I think I, I'm not pretending that there won't be discussion. There will be discussion about our perceptions and feelings and that kind of thing. But I don't think if that's not school committee business, policy votes, budget, that kind of thing. Michelle was very clear on that. Interpersonal dynamics are not part of our business.
No, no, I was confused about that line about it was like workshops that are designed to address interpersonal relationships do not need to be posted. But if the conversation shipped into administrative business, i.e. how the business of the committee will be conducted.
Yeah, we're not
But so how the business like is how is our norms and protocols, but we won't be discussing.
Yeah, we're not going to be discussing anything new for adoption that would require deliberation.
And Michelle was quite clear that we did not need to post this.
Did we talk to you at the town clerks?
I talked to Chris Carmody. The town clerk was not.
Okay. Yeah. Not just because we, you know, we've, we've pledged transparency. I just want to make sure that we're not, we're not, no, exactly.
No.
Doing anything that looks like we're trying to.
Yeah. And I think that, you know, when we're getting advice on council, that kind of supersedes everything. So
Councils could be wrong.
They could be, but we have consulted with the town of Concord. So Alexa had that conversation today. So we are doing it and we'll just go from there.
Great. Is he gonna, are we gonna get sort of a a plan, an outline of the of the conversation?
No. No, it's just gonna be everyone, just gonna be surprised. Yeah, we we have nothing. So we literally, if we had anything, we would certainly share it with the entire committee, but we have nothing. And I think, you know, we went through the same process. We had that original, the first meeting. Because that was the agreed upon that the chairs would have that meeting and everybody had their individuals. And now we're all going in the same way.
I know. I think, I think Rob engages in this kind of work. Seems like all the time. He is extremely busy, as evidenced by his schedule. So, you know, I think his professional experience is we'll just rely upon that. I'm comfortable with that. All right. Where's our girl Eva?
I know. Oh, I have to open up public comments again. So moving on to additional public comments. So if you are, we actually don't have have any members in the public room except for Bob, which I doesn't look like he's going to make any public comments. So if you are on our Zoom audience and you would like to make a public comment, if you could use the raise hand feature and limit your comments to three minutes or less. Eva.
Hi, how are you? Good to see everyone. Not a, not a comment, just a question. Actually, a few questions. One, following the STAR presentation on student data is is STAR Renaissance, uh, uh, STAR testing done throughout all four years of the high school for the students, or is it just the ninth and 10th grade? And then I have a question about can I participate now in the, every year, we, I guess, can I, can I participate in a survey of the school committee member work as a reflection of how we have worked over the past year? And also, is there a final verdict? And maybe I have missed, I apologize on the superintendent evaluation because that that is something that we have done every year. Can, are we doing that this year? Somebody, what what's the procedure and protocol?
So first, we will get back to on your questions on the STAR data because we are not allowed to interact with the public and I apologize in advance for saying that. So we will not engage with you on that tonight, but we will certainly get back to with answers. And then in terms of our superintendent evaluation, that is coming up later in the agenda. And so you can stay tuned for that. We do have that as an action item and we discussed last week. And I'm, I'm breaking protocol right here because Eva was a former school committee member. But we discussed last week that we're moving to in every other year evaluation and you will participate if you so choose in our school committee evaluation.
And in the self, yeah, exactly.
Self evaluation.
But if, yeah, if you want to, you're welcome.
You want to, you're welcome.
We can't compel you to, but you're welcome. And you will get a link. You're on Dorothy's distribution.
Yes. Hey, anyone else in the public have any comments? Please use the raise hand feature. And Eva, you could put your hand down. That'd be great. All right. On to our action items and we have a few tonight. So the first one is to approve a new member to adult and community ed. I believe you all received this in your packet. And this is a formality. So would someone like to make a motion to approve Alison Prey?
The move that the Concord and Concord Carlisle School Committees vote to appoint Alison Prey to the CCA CE Advisory Committee for a three year term commencing in July of 2022.
And we have a second?
Second?
Any discussion?
I think it's important that the advisory committee be known to the school committee. I think that that additional visibility and legitimacy strengthens them and the work they do on our behalf. And they do a lot to support the professional staff for that, for that department that is invisible to some of us. You know, they operate off budget or at least off appropriation. They operate off hours. Nonetheless, they serve many, many people every year and importantly, connect some people who otherwise wouldn't have any direct or even perhaps indirect association with the schools with the schools because of the community ed program. So thank you to our staff up there and thank you, Alison, for joining the group.
And I can give a little background on Alison, but it was provided to me with her letter that she has five children in public school system. She lives in Carlisle. She has, she herself is a clarinet student at IMSC. Yes, that's great. So and she has two children who do the music lessons as well and anticipate that there'll soon be one doing driver's ed. And she's just enjoyed everything and every interaction that she's had. She is a full time software engineer and is just always interested to find ways for herself and her family to get involved in the community. And she's just a great person. So she says, I find that I have slightly more time to do the things I enjoy as well to become more involved in Concord and Carlisle events and the things that are not child related programs that are enriching and enjoyable for adults for a variety of purposes, professional growth, personal growth and leisure. IMSCC was the first first experience in many years of doing something that I wanted to do for myself, independent of anything child related. Although I did think about it because of how much my two children were enjoying it as well. So it made me appreciate the value of the adult and community education programs they bring to residents. So.
There you go. Thank you to Alison for joining that group. She will definitely be an asset. And we'll take a vote. So all in favor?
Hi.
Hi. All right. Welcome to Alison. All right. Moving on to, we have a vote to prove the tuition for non resident students to the CCHS programs. And this one is in special education and you should have received that also in your packet on the agenda. And I think we're just ready to vote. Ready to vote. All right. So I would entertain a motion to approve tuitions at the rate approved by the school committee, which would be $45,000. That's the recommended rate. So move. Second.
I'll second it in order to pose a question. My second motion.
Yep. And now discussion.
What are we doing here? Are we simply authorizing open enrollment? I don't think so. Or are we authorizing the superintendent or her designee on a one by one case by case? What's this new gateway going to look like if if we approve it?
So we had some of that discussion last week and we started with this and I think we received this this week. So do you want to answer that, Dr. Hunter?
Sure. And to some extent, we've got a chicken and egg situation. So we've been, been taken inquiries from a number of other local districts that are interested in enrolling students in our pathways program at the high school. In order to be able to continue that conversation with them, they need to know what we would charge for a fee. You set all fees in the district, period. So we would not set that fee without bringing it to you for approval. We can talk on the process from there. Right now it's two students that we're talking about that we would like to continue to move along. We have students who need to know what their plan is for the fall. We could bring you each individual request as it comes, the same way we do with staff, children of staff and exchange students. I don't think that's overly cumbersome unless we come up against the timeline over the summer or something like that. But otherwise, we certainly could do that. Right now, the request is for two families that are considering enrolling their students here. But again, the other districts can't make decisions without knowing what tuition we're going to charge. So Debbie's done the work to put the numbers together. We started with per pupil and then looked at the additional supports and personnel that would be required because of the needs of the students and the program that they're looking to enter. We've disqualified what we would not be including. So those would be additional charges to the other districts should those be required. And I think we're looking for a vote on the rate tonight so that we can continue the conversation with the other two school systems.
I I just would love to explore a little bit because I, my understanding is that I know that that this is a business office to business office, like sped in business office to sped in business office conversation usually. So I just want to make sure that we're not. I mean, I'm, I'm fine approving, you know, supporting endorsing a rate, but I just want to make sure that we're, that school committee is not imposing themselves in a place where they're not supposed to be. And that would still allow the operations to to function how they're supposed to. So just, I'd love to explore that a little bit more with MASC, you know, to
So so correct me if I'm wrong, but this is common practice to tuition other students. You can tuition other students into public schools. So we're just simply rate setting.
I understand that, but I, my understanding is that when it's done, usually for we don't, we don't get involved. It's not a school committee thing. In fact, it's very much not our thing. And so I just want to make sure we're not going where we're not supposed to go. That's, that's my concern. I'm not, I'm not objecting to the principle.
The principle of it.
I understand it happens often, but that it often happens as a, you know, sped director and sped director talk about what the services are and business office says to business office, this is what it would cost. So I just want to double check how we're supposed to. But I know, I understand where we're even getting to that point is like, this is sort of a, right, like, let's test amongst us.
Right. Certainly in an early stage of doing any of this, I would bring you the information to talk about.
So I just want to make sure that you can proceed forward how you're supposed to per the operating
What seems embedded in this or implied is that this is space available such that no teaching ratios would have to, not teaching ratio, excuse me, no FTEs would be
So
impacted.
There are FTE impacts, which is why the rate is 45,000 and not the per pupil rate of 21,000. So that's factored into the cost.
Okay.
And Debbie outlined those for you there. You can see paraprofessional tutors for us, related services, some portion of OTPT SLP and then routine administrative costs. So she's factored in pieces of all of that, but we certainly have FTE needs, especially with the tutor situation.
Okay, that's an important caveat then.
Right.
Yeah. That there could be staff ads by virtue of this.
There will be.
So next question. And that is, are we obligated morally or legally to accept additional students, having accepted one, having accepted two, at what point are we entitled to say no?
Always entitled to say no.
Always. Okay. All right. And is there a presumption here that if a student arrives for, let us say, grade nine, that we will do our utmost to see that that student can proceed through four years at the high school? Is that a a unstated hoped for obligation on our part?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Right. And potentially it could be till 22.
Could be. They may graduate up into launch.
So their home district would still be paying the tuition up till 22. Any other discussion?
Yes, I'd love a report on this at the end of the year, end of next year.
Certainly Debbie can bring updates.
Rather new and a bit unusual for us. Thank you.
Great, great. So I think we have a motion that's been seconded. So we'll take a vote. So all in favor?
Aye.
Post. Great.
One more question post. How would we see this reflected in the budget? If we're adding.
Yep. Bob and I had a quick chat earlier. We're going to need a revolving account that we'll have to bring you to establish in August.
Okay.
So the income is going to sit aside from the budget and the FTEs may be in and we'll have to do the the loops for you. So you see the links.
Okay.
Good. Which is an unusual. We have other situations like that.
Okay.
I know the other districts do this too.
Yes.
There's a formula.
Sure.
Our next item is the Rivers and Revolutions potential tuition and you should have received that memo also. And Dr. Hunter, do you want to?
Yes.
Start with that first.
To talk on this. So Rivers, as you know, you're well familiar to a point. Be happy to talk more with those who aren't as our integrated program at the high school where kids come out for a semester and integrate with content across all the subject areas and do a lot of work outside of the school. So we've been approached again by another, a third neighboring district, which I'm finding pretty exciting that they'd like to consider. Again, this is all, we need a decision on our part to give them information to make decisions on their part. They've inquired whether we might consider accepting students from their high school on a semester basis into Rivers and they would tuition them in. Just, you know, history on the other side of this discussion, Rivers is a very hard program to start from scratch if you're in a school district that hasn't seeded it already. So I think that's somewhat where they're coming from. They're familiar with Rivers and really interested in giving some of their students access to it. So we need to set a tuition rate in order for them to continue their discussions, their local discussions, and then their conversations with us about whether they're going to actually pursue that. For rates, reasons of simplicity, we, Mike Mustula and I sat together and decided per pupil makes the most sense, at least as a starting point. In some ways, this would be a pilot to get kids in and go from there to see if we feel comfortable with that number in the long term. We would not need to add staffing or enrollment. It's not low enough right now for the fall and spring semesters that we would not need additional staff. So we are comfortable with a semester rate, which would be half of the per pupil annual rate. And if for some reason our numbers at CC go up, this would become waitlist material. Our kids will always have priority into Rivers.
Okay. Any questions on that before?
Could you talk a little bit about how the Rivers and Revolutions teachers are responding to this idea?
Yes, Mike Mustula spoke to them earlier in the week, as did the CCTA. They're intrigued and receptive. So they're curious. I think there's a couple of them on tonight, listening to see what your decision is. And I think interesting going forward and seeing what that new idea turns into. So.
Given that operations are on your side of the table and budget lives in part on our side of the table. Are these tuitions, both this one and the previous move that we made, expected to be front loaded? Or are we going to carry some of these costs for a period of time before we see the, see the revenues flow in?
Typically, districts are going to pay these very quickly and early. If for some reason that wasn't a possibility, Bob's office will work with their finance staff, but
We wouldn't be carrying a load that we're not capable of.
No, no.
Thank you.
Thank you. The explanation on the, on the rate setting, because I think of Rivers as like a premium product, right? And so it seems that you could have more of a but, but I understand that this is, this is to see what's the appetite out there and does it work for us?
Correct.
And all of that. And as I understand it, we're still trying to figure out even how that the student, the incoming, it would just be, the students would come in for just the one
One semester.
Semester.
Yeah.
And just still figuring out, because River students can also take one elective, right?
Yeah, some do, some don't, depending on their credits. Yeah.
What, what other options, what other services or or things in the school would be available? That's all, this is
That's all still under discussion. Yeah, it's early.
Yeah.
Yeah. And we talked a little bit on that today. And so they're essentially a student within our high school. And so should they need the nurse, the nurse will be available to them, you know, and in terms of, you know, And so should they need the nurse, the nurse will be available to them, you know, and in terms of, you know, just like when you're thinking logistics. So they're going to work out the logistics. But you know, a lot of River students don't actually take that elective class. So.
Yeah. And then, um, I mean, in terms of, I, I don't even know how this works in terms of, because I don't, I don't know if there's like, does any other school have this? I don't, I mean, I know that we have a unique opportunity to offer students. And so there isn't normally a reason why someone from one town would take a class at another one. But I'm aware, I assume we're checking like liability for the student or how that student, because like when we, when we take in international exchange students, they come through, we take them on the premise that they come through a vetted international exchange program that, that covers, that has all of that legalese stuff, like in terms of this, where does that child, like where does that student live in, in that, like, are they enrolled? Like they're, they're enrolled in our school. So they're like in the Aspen, they're, they're all of that, right?
For the semester. So all of our protections will cover them. I think part of the question I think I hear in there is how are the students going to be selected and who are we going to invite in? That's an ongoing discussion as well.
Yeah. No, that one I'm not so interested. I'm just wondering to, to just to make sure that we've dotted all of our.
Oh, the reason, yeah, they'll be enrolled.
Potential liability and how, and how this.
They are CC students while they're here.
Yeah. And so do we, then do we need to, do we, you know, like, do we need to do any policy work to account for it, like to allow? Because we don't have a mechanism right now.
Right. And it's not, um, no. And so I think that we look at our exchange students, we have a policy on that. I mean, that's something we could definitely explore. Their policy committee isn't meeting again until probably.
Yeah. So MASC used to have, and it's been rolled up into some of the other enrollment policies, a non-resident tuition policy. Um, I think we can look at our admission enrollment policies and look to see if we add portions of that. And it outlines, it used to outline some of the steps of tuition related enrollments.
Something like that. And I think like, yeah, I can't remember if it was your book line or.
Yeah, it used to exist as its own policy.
Just at least, at least says that we allow this kind of thing where we don't have something that explicitly allows for it. So just.
Right. And while we're still like exploring it, seeing what's going to happen and who knows if it's actually going to come to fruition or not, right? And so we'll work on the policy. I'll work with Dorothy and we'll see if she can make some recommendations.
It's a super cool opportunity.
Yeah.
I mean, even just in terms of having our kids relate with other kids and it just build goodwill across towns and stuff. I mean, there's so many.
All of us reinventing wheels doesn't make sense in a lot of cases. So.
And it's just a huge endorsement about the, you know, the interdisciplinary and kind of atypical or whatever, uh, a traditional, uh, approaches, non-traditional approaches to education. But you know, it's all about like what the CEF was here for innovation, innovation, right?
Yeah.
I mean, I think it's, it's cool. I just, I'm, you know, I just want to make sure we.
Yeah, I do think there's a policy down the road and there's a step of procedures down the road and a lot we're going to need to sort out, but we wanted an initial blessing and we need to give them a tuition for them to even consider it. So, yeah. Good. Thank you.
Thank you for all those questions.
Okay. So I would make a motion to approve the annual straight per pupil expenditure. No, I'm sorry. I don't agree with that. I would change a motion to approve the tuition of ten thousand six hundred and forty five dollars per semester for the Rivers and Revolutions program for a student or students from a visiting district.
Neighboring.
Neighboring district. Thank you.
Neighboring district.
Second. Uh, no, excuse me. I, I, I move the motion, move it as stated.
Thank you. I have a second.
Second.
Any more discussion?
Be interested in how it works out. I'm sure we'll hear about it.
And again, another pilot. So posted, see if it, you know.
It's been really exciting to get these cold calls from other districts who think we're doing good things. So.
Great. That's great. Okay. And so we'll take a vote. So all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion passes. All right. Um, we're moving on to our trips and you saw these last week, you saw football and girl soccer last week, and we have an addition of boys cross country. So we just pulled this up and we will do them all separately. If anyone would like to embark on a motion for any of these trips, you should have seen them all. Um, they all have, were very thorough. So thank you for that. Two or three coaches.
I move that the the preseason football trip be, uh, approved as proposed.
Second. Okay. Discussion?
Yes. The fee is not included here. And we have two others, one that references a hundred dollars per student. Another one that references two hundred dollars as a registration fee, which I think is for the entire group. So then presumably there'd be other travel costs borne by somebody. I don't think that, uh, the school committee wants to get particularly involved in what the fees are, how they are set. However, there may be a point where these fees do prompt again, as they did before, discussions about equity access, who can go, who might be denied. You know, sooner or later, the fees can reach a threshold when they are out of pocket fees by families. So in this case for football, I would hope that that fee is known to Superintendent Hunter and Assistant Superintendent Connery, um, before this thing.
I have it in an email that didn't make it to the form, a hundred eighty five dollars per player.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And I do believe that there is scholarship available.
Yes.
On all of these.
Yeah, I actually feel the athletic settings are ahead of us on some of the subsidies that are available versus the international travels. So everyone's going to be able to.
Okay. Um, so we'll put this to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. And on to girls soccer.
I move that the CCHS girls soccer team bonding trip be approved as proposed.
To have a second. Okay. Thank you. Any discussion about soccer?
As with all the teachers and chaperones, these ones deserve our thanks as well.
And we're really hoping that they can get to their trips this year.
They're going to get to their trips. We're going to do COVID differently. Yes.
So thank you for attending with our students. All right. Uh, we'll put you a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Right. Soccer is going on their trip. And cross country was the new one, but similar format to all of the other trips. And you should have received the information on your agenda.
The one big difference is this is not overnight. It is just out of state. So it's much simpler, which is why I hope you don't mind just approving it on one vote instead of waiting for two sessions.
Yeah. So I would entertain a motion to approve the over, the out of state field trip for, um, cross country.
I move that the Ocean State Cross Country Invitational Trip be approved as proposed.
I'll second that. And I do have a question. Two twenty, I don't think that's for student. Can we ask Mrs. McCabe to confirm that that's just a registration fee for the team? Because I would find it kind of shocking. There'd be two twenty.
Certainly.
Yeah. That, that's just the registration fee.
I was gonna say, she's right here.
Thank you. I thought that cross country team was a bargain, but not anymore.
Yeah, no, thanks, Mary for.
Thank you for being with us too. She just came out of the speakers. I love that.
Well, we're on the subject transportation for this one. Um, given that it's a single day and a team with this, this would be a school bus. So that
Buses.
That number is not noted in here, but absorbed elsewhere. Thank you.
All right. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good luck.
All right. Good luck to cross country. Um, okay. So next up we have the, uh, a vote to approve the superintendent evaluation cycle that we brought to you last week for discussion in moving, um, Dr. Hunter to, and every other year in accordance with, um, DESI guidelines. So, um, I will ask, would you be able to make a motion?
Yeah.
That's right. Thank you.
I move that in accordance with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education Guidelines, the Concord and Carl, Concord, Carlisle Regional School Committees move Dr. Lori Hunter's evaluation cycle from an annual to biannual as such, the superintendent's next evaluation will be June of twenty twenty three.
And do we have a second for that?
Second.
Okay. Discussion?
I'm still debating this one. I want you to know. I'm an educator. There's other educators in the room. We've spent a lot of, uh, our evening talking about assessment and evaluation and, uh, it's difficult for me to voluntarily forego a, uh, regular feedback mechanism or an evaluation tool. I simply think it's a fundamental part of student learning. I think it's a fundamental part of professional development and I think it would, uh, be, uh, something worth careful consideration before we vote on this because we're denying our senior professional, the one person with whom we interact with an opportunity to hear our, our feedback.
Okay. Can I hear from other committee members?
Um, I, I see Mr. Booth's point and I, I do feel like it is somewhat inconsistent with, you know, how we handle all of the other evaluations of personnel. Although, um, I do see the wisdom in, uh, MASC slash DESI recommending that senior experienced superintendents get moved to a biannual or a two-year cycle, but they also do encourage, which we're just going to drive by, an annual sort of a, a dipstick, um, a discussion. So we're not really doing, because we didn't plan for this at the beginning of the year. So not really following their.
Do that and it wouldn't be a technically a mid, a mid-cycle, but we did that in January.
I think it, it's a stronger recommendation with the two-year review. So, um, I just think maybe we should, you know, put in place in the fall, it really structured, um, two-year cycle that then we will follow subsequently.
Yeah.
I'm not asking for something that's now. I'm just saying.
Right. Yeah. Yes, I think that's.
Because it's a, it's a, it's, it feels a little casual the way we do it because we know it's going to be annual evaluation.
I could make a motion to amend the motion with a note of a mid-year evaluation.
Or mid-cycle.
Sorry. That's what I mean.
Yeah. They, they recommend, they say the formative mid-cycle review would occur at the end of year one of the cycle and the summative evaluation would occur at the end of year two.
Yes. And I think we would be following that. So let our, we should note that in the motion.
So we're taking a twelve-month formative summative and making it a twenty-four-month formative summative, quite simply.
So should we withdraw the motion?
No, I think we can understand that. We've had the discussion. The minutes will reflect our discussion.
Discussion.
And.
And we've said that we're doing it in accordance with MASC's recommendation, which is exactly that.
So the only thing we need to decide is where I guess we have decided is that we're not going to have that mid-year evaluation next year, correct?
No, we would have the formal review next year.
At the end of the year.
What you're saying is we wouldn't do the normal formative conversation in January of twenty twenty three.
Right. Correct.
Right. So it's a long run.
Yes.
It is.
Yeah.
Especially for us, because we're jumping in sort of halfway through.
Okay. Any other main members, any thoughts on that? Okay. All right. So let's put that to a vote. So all in favor? Opposed? All right. Um, and now we're back to the FY twenty-two funds that we're going to take a vote this evening. And Dr. Hunter, I am going to turn it to you for this one.
Yes, absolutely. So we brought you an updated set of numbers for tonight in terms of the high school and where we are with the FY twenty-two closeout. So if you pull the memo up, you'll see the first number is the same as last week with a remaining balance of seven hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. After, um, anticipating other expenditures that were not factored in last week, we've adjusted the rest of it, which actually simplified it quite a bit. Sadly, because there wasn't as much money left to work with. Um, so we still need the three hundred thousand for the E and D contribution. And then subtracting three hundred and forty thousand in anticipated expenditures, you had two hundred thousand there last week, we've added a hundred and forty more, which is where the three forties coming from with a total remaining balance then of ninety-three thousand. So our recommendation now is that that be applied towards circuit breaker as well as any other end of year balance. So the way in which it's written here is up to a hundred thousand with any remaining balance. That's not the actual motion. That was the recommendation. We rounded that ninety-three to a hundred. You'll have a little more than that likely as we close out because there are still, um, things that are, you know, going to settle as, as the month goes by.
Sarah, yeah. So if you think that there, so you think there may be a chance that we go over a hundred, like we have over a hundred thousand dollars left over?
You'll have probably some bit over a hundred thousand as we close out. So the wording we used, we borrowed it from Carlisle at CPS was that amount and any other remaining. And I think that's and any other remaining balance. And then you're covered.
Yeah. Yeah.
So that would be our recommendation.
Your reference to the revolving accounts, uh, is information, but it doesn't impact what's happening here.
Correct.
Your reference there implies that if revolving accounts were in trouble, we might do what we've done before, which is to shore them up for a new fiscal year.
And I think we.
Necessary now.
Right. We brought you information last week on the revolving accounts. We might need a little bit of lunch, but that's factored in here. So.
So there might be.
There might be, as we're waiting on the federal reimbursements, which we should have within the week now that we're wrapping up.
All right. Not come our way in a memo or something perhaps requiring.
Yeah. When the, when we've actually closed the year, the year end reports, I'll show you all of it.
So just to, because some people are new, we do budget every year for the laptops. So we're, we're using FY twenty-two to buy FY twenty-three laptops. We do have in the FY twenty-three budget.
Correct.
And we'll probably do the same thing next year. So.
Right.
We're always creating a surplus. And then you, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, it's a cash flow.
Yeah.
Decision. Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, correct. I, I know they're a little bit hard to get these days.
Yeah, we're, we're anxious to get the order out.
There's not like, it's not unlike the prepay, you know?
No, it's.
Prepay. It's like, you expect you'll be able to do, the continue of the practice.
Yes.
But should you not be able to?
Yep.
And, uh, and situations arise, then at least you've got.
Yeah.
Yep.
And then just a question. So the, um, the special ed, um, is, we have carrying over from last year. What is it? Close to eight hundred thousand?
Yes, that was in last week's.
It is put into contingency. Is that?
It's circuit breaker. So it's going to remain in circuit breaking.
And circuit breaker could only be spent on?
Tuition out of, out of district tuition, period. It's the subsidy from the state.
It's not. So we can't just go off and get an FTE.
No, 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 no.
Yeah.
Just highly, highly regulated and monitored. You can talk to Debbie Dixon about the reports she has to file. Yeah.
Okay.
You can repeat the arcane legal financial as often as you want.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sure.
Because people sort of, you know, we keep saying a circuit breaker and people are, I'm not, I'm not.
Why aren't you guys using that?
Yeah.
Well, we're really looking forward to, uh, I, I hope I'm not speaking out of turn, but I do think that Mr. Conroy has a, a really good presentation on budgets to.
Better than I've been doing.
Are we doing it tonight?
No, 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 no.
Let's get it. Not on your clock quite yet.
Definitely not. I'm just looking forward to July.
We all are.
All right. So there is a suggested motion in here. If someone would like to make that motion.
I move that the Concord Carlisle School Committee authorize the prepayment of fiscal twenty twenty-three tuitions in accordance with MGL Chapter seventy-one, Section seventy-one D and MGL Chapter forty, Section four E.
And do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. And any more discussion?
Well, it's, uh, obvious that it, uh, conforms with the information above. We have a approximate number that this will drive.
Yes. And thank you to Dr. Hunter and Ian Rames.
Ian's on the call. So we're going to give him a shout out for the work he's doing.
We appreciate that. Okay. All right. All in favor?
Aye. The region.
Thank you so much. All right. And I think that almost brings us to the end. So if you're with us in the public, uh, thank you for coming. And it's, I wanted to play Schools Out for Summer because that's one of my favorite songs, but I decided not to play it this evening. But, um, have a great rest of the school year. You have one more day tomorrow. Thank you to our teachers, staff, everyone in the buildings. And then I know that teachers come back the day after. So thank you for another. And then I know that teachers come back the day after. So thank you for another great year. We really are grateful for everything that you do for us.
Absolutely.
Pass along to principals.
We will pass that along.
All staff.
All staff. So thank you so much. And
Thank you to our families as well.
Yeah.
And enjoy the summer.
Yeah, and we will see everybody back live in August and you can just check our website for our exact dates. So we've had so many days fly by and losing track, but
August twenty-third.
August twenty-third. Thank you. So I would make a motion to adjourn the region. Thank you.
Second?
All right.
I have to move to close this CPSC opened it. So
Yes.
I'll make a motion to return the Concord Public Schools.
So moved.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you, everybody.
Guys, enjoying your last day. Thanks, Bob.
Thanks for coming.